Good luck.
Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the let's see, today is June twenty fourth, Tuesday, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Newcastle Town Board. The board has been in executive session and now I'd like to ask for motion to open the work session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Um, we are going to start our work session with a discussion of an RFP for the Newcastle Town Hall, Town Hall space uh for a feasibility assessment. Um, Rob, do you wanna get us started on the topic?
Sure, so Sabrina is joining us online tonight. Um, I think really kinda the genesis here this came about after the uh Envision survey and I think we um you know, we came to realize that this is a very old building if you sit in here for any length of time like the supervisor did the other day and it was really, really hot. Um, there's a the building is really inadequate for our needs right now. Um, all of the departments are really bursting at the seams. We've had uh, we've had some really great interns this summer and we've had to scramble and place them in all different departments uh because we just don't physically have a desk for them to sit at or a computer for them to use. Um, among other things, we've got mechanicals for the building that are old, inadequate and inefficient. Um, and it really doesn't provide much in the way the building itself. Uh, not a lot of meeting space or recreational space that we have maybe talked about during Envision. So Sabrina, help me, is there anything I'm missing?
No, no, I I think that that you kind of hit everything um on the head. I think that the the biggest thing that came out of the Envision process was that people really wanted community space um and recreation space. And um, if you look at the the what we're facing in regards to inadequate systems in town hall, inadequate space. The intent to bring in somebody who would help us optimize our space and flow and function of our interior spaces to reconf- you know, may look at reconfiguring the current space for public, better public access um and administrative meeting functions. Um, looking at community programming and really kinda taking a thorough inventory from both a functional standpoint and a condition standpoint of our building. Um, in the past, we've conducted energy studies, understanding that our infrastructure in the building is coming to the end of its useful life life and we'd really like to be able to take advantage of uh greener technology. Uh, but given the existing footprint of the building and the existing condition is very challenging for us to do that. So um, before we invest in repeating a lot of the carbon-based systems that we use today, we really want to take a look at the condition of the building and its functionality. Um, and really try and get a sense of how can we do better.
Thank you, so this uh, this needs analysis is really the first step to uh, to doing anything bigger and better with this building, just kind of to to determine current needs, future needs, et cetera, and that's a a starting point to anything better.
Okay, well, um, you know, the way I look at this is that there are, there are several data points that we have. We, we did the Envision survey which started in May of twenty twenty three. We had in-person sessions uh and it culminated into a townwide survey. Um, which, to which we got good you know, solid responses where people were very clear, like Sabrina said, that they wanted um to enhance walkability and their pedestrian experience. They wanted uh green spaces and specifically also recreational spaces. And um, you know, they didn't want to fill the space uh that we looked at with a lot of housing, but they did um put emphasis on recreation among the other things I mentioned. So that's one data point. The other data point is the experience of our staff and whoever uses this building. Like you said, we're running out of space, we've uh grown it. Um, our HVAC systems and our roof is uh, you know, in trouble. And so we need repairs, significant repairs. And the other data point is what our experiences with our recreations, our recreation department and the demand for programming that we have. Um, in particular, our summer programs last um, last year. Well, let's see, at the beginning of uh the enrollment period for this year, we had about a hundred and fifty uh kids who were waitlisted um among the three summer camp programs. So we know that there is a large demand for recreational space. So, you know, in terms of the survey, that's that's not the only data point we have. We have our experience and demands from our residents from different um, from different areas of town and different um different stakeholders.
And in the past, and and this goes back probably twenty years or so, we've uh the police department in particular is kinda maxed out. There, they don't have adequate room uh down there as it is. And um, we did a study about twenty years ago, a feasibility study on expanding that and maybe adding onto the building. So um, for whatever reason, that was never followed through. That was before my time, before Sabrina's time. But um, this is a more comprehensive look at the entire building, not just one department.
I wanna stress what we're talking about here in terms of the this building that we're in. Cause I don't know that that point was really made clear during the Envision process. It was such that 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 scope was a bit larger than what we're talking about right now. And to Vicky's point, we're running out of space in this building. The HVAC system doesn't work. We have our meetings and it's raining and the ceiling is leaking in the conference room. If you're here on a Thursday during court, sometimes there's people spilling out of the building. The, this room is not large. Um, if you were to take a walk through the different departments, people are really cramped. The space is cramped. The police department is out of space. So I do think that our town staff deserve uh uh an updated building. I think that we're uh a town with a lot of beautiful amenities, our town hall should be one of them. And I'm looking forward to learning what this, this process will reveal about what we can do to make our town hall and police department more functional, updated, serve the community better. Um, and I just wanna make sure people understand, like, I don't know that that, they understand, like, the mechanics of this building need a major update. That, that's just the reality that, that we have to work with right now.
Well, I think the Envision questionnaire asked um participants if they understood the needs and I think it was clear that they don't.
Right.
Right, they didn't understand.
Right.
Uh, that, that was the response that we got. And that's why a feasibility study makes sense so that the taxpayers can know.
Right, I agree with you, John.
And I, I mean, I think that it makes sense we start at the beginning.
Yep.
What, what do we need? We, there's things that we can see, but I think a orderly, expert approach to assessing it is um important.
So one thing I wanna make sure of um as we look at the RFP, because you've um provided a draft of the RFP.
Yep.
Right, so I wanna make sure that when we hire a consultant, that it's someone who can tell us not just what we can do with the physical space, but someone who can understand our programming needs as well. You know, pick whatever program we have in town that we might need space for, that they have a good understanding of not just the amount of space, not just the square footage um and the mechanicals, but how space is utilized.
Yeah, in this study
There's a lot of different programs.
too, they won't just look at the building, they'll talk with staff too. So they'll talk with the recreation department. Uh, Sabrina's department is probably the has the most density in this building. There is no room in her department. So they'll talk with the different departments to see what their needs are, with the police to see what would be better there. When they have a prisoner down there, it's difficult for them. They don't, they, there's no secure access to get them in and out of the building. Sometimes they'll come up through the stairs. Uh, that's not ideal.
Right. So, I mean, this may seem obvious, but um I just wanna make sure we get a consultant that knows how to, an architect that knows how to um understand the different uses. Because like you just said, you know, we have the, the police
Mm-hmm.
um, department, we have the town court, we have people who come in to, you know, to pay their fines, we have uh town board, we have meetings, we have staff, so and we have the recreation department, so there are many different uses that differ very widely. So I'm, I'm sure we can find that person, but I just wanna make sure that that's captured in the RFP.
Yep.
I also wanna make sure we're not just looking at the snapshot of where we are today, but that we aren't setting ourselves up to outgrow the space again immediately.
Yeah, that, that's definitely part of it.
Yeah, it, it is part of it, it does talk about future, future needs. So we'd be looking at how many years out did, was there um was there a specific reference to
I don't recall, Sabrina, do you remember how many, how far?
It says the next twenty years on page six.
That, that's what I thought, yeah.
And scope of service.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, it, it is, it is the, the future capacity is also considered.
Yeah.
Future capacity is also considered.
And is that a standard span of time?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Okay.
And so just to give you a sense of how this RFP was written, it was based off of discussions with local professionals who do this type of work.
And so I think the sense of the RFP is that it was based off of discussions with local professionals who do this type of work.
Um, I did extensive research of other governments who have had space needs assessments done. And I compiled what um, what I thought was best for um for what we were looking for and it's everything that you all just mentioned um and that we've been talking about. So this is very reflective of what we see as our needs. And we have to keep it open as well and in receiving proposals, we may get additional um guidance, if you will, as to what we should be looking at.
And we have to keep it open as well. And additional guidance if you will, as to what we should be looking at.
Yep, and, and Sabrina prepared this with uh input from myself and Jeff Gaspar, the town engineer as well.
Yes.
Yes. And it was reviewed by council, Lino.
Okay. I didn't see anything.
Okay, does it, does anyone have any comments on the proposal itself? I think it covers, it's, it covers a wide array of all, all of our needs. Um, thank you for doing that, appreciate it. I think it's really well done. And um, I think we'll get into you know, once we make, hopefully make this hire, we, we pick, pick our respondent that will get into the details of what we in fact do want to do with the, the town hall and community space.
We can clarify that, obviously, we'll interview at least a candidate. Hopefully, we'll have several to choose from and we can make that clear in the interviews.
Okay. Alright, so what's the timing on this?
Sabrina, when do you think we'll be able to issue this?
Um, I think we can issue this as soon as Friday.
I think we can issue this as soon as
it, um, you know, we can, we can put it out there.
You know, we can, we can put it out there.
Um, and circulate it.
And circulate it.
Put it up on bid net, I guess, I'm not sure.
I guess, I'm not sure. Maybe it's just circulated.
Yeah, well, I would definitely put it on bid net and then we'll also circulate it. I know there's some local interest and some firms that we're familiar with.
Exactly.
If we can, we can reach out to directly to the last.
So we'll, we'll try and get it out the door this week um and give a probably about three or four weeks response time. So we'll, we'll try and get it out the door this week um and give a probably about three or four weeks response time.
Okay.
Yeah, I think over the summer, we need to have a kind of extended response time. You may not have, especially if we start right before July fourth weekend. Who wanted to?
Right, right.
Right, that sounds reasonable.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so I look forward to the responses.
Yeah.
Thank you for preparing this.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, thank you Sabrina.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Alright, bye-bye.
Have a good one.
Thanks, Sabrina.
Okay, Rob, um, you have your quarterly project update for us.
I do, picking up where Joe left off, this is my first uh quarterly project update, so
Yeah. That's right.
Uh, what I have here is kind of a thumbnail sketch.
Really tiny.
Uh, stop me if you want more information.
You don't have any copies of it?
Um.
Unfortunately, I couldn't download it because I, I lost my internet today, so.
And I can't read it on my phone.
And I definitely cannot read it.
Or you can either the other way on the page to make
Yeah, when we put the package together, I do.
Yeah.
Oh, you have it like that, oh.
Um, okay.
Thanks, Lauren.
Okay, so, do you want me to
Sorry, Rob.
start without, no, that's okay. I, I did the same thing, cause I definitely can't read that then.
Mm-hmm.
I, I have it on eight and a half by uh fourteen paper, so. Do you wanna wait a minute till you receive the copy or do you want me to start?
Um, what do
We should dig in on Minkle Dam, shouldn't we? Cause that could take
Sure, so the, the first one's Minkle Dam.
Yeah, let's
We, we can
So what I was gonna say, these are kinda thumbnail sketches. Uh, they fit in a little box, so I've got, there's quite a few projects that I'm updating. Stop me if you want any more information on it. Some, there may be more information, some is just a, a brief update. So Minkle Dam is the first one and that is um, as we all know, that's an ongoing multi-year project. So the delay so far has been with the uh DEC. Uh, so we finally heard back in the last several months on their comments. Uh, the DEC and Army Corps of Engineer had uh some concerns and actually rejected the original proposal that we had, which was to de-water the dam and then to take the sediment at the bottom of the dam and kinda redistribute it on the site, helping to uh build some walking trails, et cetera. So DEC's interpretation now is that that is a uh, you know, water course, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
And that we can't disturb that sediment for five years. So we either have to leave it there or we have to remove it completely. Um, which adds cost, adds some time and some complexity to the project. So we have a meeting scheduled with Tectonic. Uh, I thought it was scheduled for tomorrow, but it looks like it may have been moved uh to a couple days from now. Uh, where we're going to kinda get an update and a path forward. Uh, Tectonic's been working on some revised plans for this and uh hoping to be able to get back to the DEC and get some approval uh to move forward with this. So funding wise, we had phase one of the project was funded with a FEMA brick grant. Uh, the funding, as far as we know, is still in place through December. Unfortunately, that's not going to cover the entire project uh as, as it's now um gonna be formulated. So we have a FEMA, uh, we have a um, a grant that we've applied to for the remainder of the funding. The project looks like it's probably gonna be in the area of four million dollars at this point. We originally thought around a million and a half, uh, maybe close to two million, but looks like it's about four million now and we're hoping that this grant will supply the funding for the shortfall.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions on Upper Minkle Dam?
I can't wait to never talk about Upper Minkle Dam again.
Yeah. Thank you.
I can't wait to either, but I, it's going to be a while.
Yeah.
My gosh. One day, one day.
We'll, we'll all go for a nice hike in there on this over.
Uh, the, the next project that's also
Not before.
Next project that's also taken a bit of time is the uh pedestrian bridge and the uh walk walking path over the duck pond. Um, the delay in that, we went out to bid, I think, back in November, December. We had three respondents. Unfortunately, uh, two ended up being not qualified and one ended up withdrawing their uh response after they determined they could not complete the project. So uh, we were back to the drawing board. Tectonic has had the plans and they're redesigning the plans. Uh, we think there were a couple components of the project that uh prevented more bidders from bidding on the project and, and maybe it wasn't quite clear enough to the other two that weren't qualified. Actually, it had no bridge experience whatsoever, so we
Jeff had given us a presentation on this, right?
Yeah.
And this is, alright, I remember he touched upon his issues.
Yeah.
So uh, I think we finally have Tectonic's revised plans and we're looking to, I think we'll be able to go out to bid in early June. I don't, uh, I'm sorry, early July, I don't think we'll get it by the end of this week, but uh, we should be ready to go with that. Uh, the Byram Lake Road culvert replacement, uh, that has uh, that is currently with DEC for their review. Um, they're not particularly quick. We have submitted the, what we believe was the final design. Um, we're not anticipating hearing for about ninety days on that right now uh to approve the design. There were also some issues. We had two properties that we had to have consent, one, a consent release uh to enter the property and one, an easement to access it for maintenance. Uh, Lino helped us out with that. We believe those are in place, so that won't hold us up any longer, but we're now waiting for DEC to uh approve the project. Okay, Shether Road, we are finally just about done with that project. Um, that, uh, we started that, I think, in late March or early April. There were a few changes to the design as we got out in the field. Uh, they expect to actually have that done by the end of this week and we can hopefully open that road back up that's been shut down for about two months, so. Okay, the North Bedford Road pump station. Um, this was the pump station, we had to replace some electrical work uh with engine pumps at the pump station.
Oh, you skipped, there's one uh East of Hudson.
Did I just? Oh, East of Hudson, uh, stormwater quality improvement.
Right.
We really haven't had any updates on those uh recently.
Oh, there's nothing there, okay.
I know, Vicky, we've been kinda working with East of Hudson.
Yes, we have, yeah, sorry, I was just looking at the one. The one column, yeah.
So the uh North Bedford Road pump station uh requires the replacement of the pumps and some electrical equipment. We had a, unfortunately, a long lead time. We have awarded the contract, uh, but we've had a long lead time on receiving the electrical equipment. Uh, Bart tells me we hope to begin the construction there in September and uh completion of the project will be about six months following that. The trenchless water main that's going underneath the uh Sawmill River Parkway and the Metro North tracks. Uh, that's been delayed for quite some time. We have needed, the contractor has needed to take some soil samples and unfortunately Metro North uh has not been easy. It's not easy to take the borings. Uh, they've been difficult to provide the permit for that. The contractor finally received the approval for the third boring and uh unfortunately his insur- insurance expired from what I was told. And now they've just gotta get a new insurance certificate and they can complete that boring. I'm told that the engineering on that is about ninety or ninety-five percent complete. They just need to see the final composition of the soil underneath the track to, to determine uh the final design for that. Okay, cement lining, water mains, uh, Bart tells me that is one of the projects that they've got uh coming up on their plate. They've got quite a few things going on, but that's uh one of the things, they've identified water mains in, uh, let's see, on Kathleen Lane, Daily Cross, uh Horseshoe Road, uh Valley View Road, Brookside Circle, High Point Circle, Lakeview, Adams and Possum Roads. Uh, those were candidates for the water re-mining. Uh, rather than replacement, they'll just cement re-line those uh water mains.
Rob, how do they determine how um whether a water main needs to be relined?
So I think it has to go to age and condition of the main.
I see.
Let's see. Um, if it's an older main, they'll probably just replace it if uh, if they determine it's a uh younger main. Um, I don't know the exact age that he uses, but I I don't know the exact age that he uses, but I know throughout town, the soil composition is very acidic in certain areas. And that causes, uh if you looked at the downtown project, the water mains down there were not particularly old, uh as old as some of them around town, and they had been eaten from both sides, they were they were eroding from the inside and from the outside. So I think some of that has to do with uh whether or not we can cement re-line them, or we have to replace them altogether.
Okay. So it's age, basically?
I think it's age, yeah.
Okay.
Uh we have some water main replacements, uh this one was already completed, the one up on Meadow Pine- Pine Cliff Ridge in Alden. Uh that was finished late last year, the punch list items were completed early this year, and final payment was made. Uh this was the project that we used our ARPA funding from, uh from the COVID. Uh that ended up coming in about one point six million dollars or so, so we had that fully funded by ARPA. Uh the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, uh I think these are the uh heating oil tanks, these are the last uh projects, the the last oil tanks in town, I think, that we are bringing from below ground to above ground. Uh let's see, we issued the RFP this spring, and I didn't, did they come back already?
Mm-hmm.
Did we award that? We're not awarding it yet, okay.
Yeah, next time, next time.
So we did get the bids, uh or the RFPs were returned, uh probably for the July eighth meeting, we will uh meet the contractor. Uh the Quaker Road Water Replacement Project, that's where we are pairing with the county uh to replace, we're gonna replace the water main, the county is running the sewer line up there. Uh the only update we have on that right now is they will not be beginning that project until the sewer relief uh main down on Joan Corwin Way is complete. Uh I'll update that in just a second, but that's not complete, and we're probably not looking at the water main there in Quaker until probably two thousand twenty-seven at the earliest.
Is there any risk to that timeline?
No, so the the water main is kind of a convenience, um because the county's already gonna have the road open with the sewer line. We have to replace the main, um it's not in really any danger, it's, you know, was one of the those on Bart's list, but it was easier for us to do it at that point to partner with the county while the road was always already open. Uh it would be less disruption for them to go in, and then us ten years later to go in.
Right.
Um and uh there's some economies of scale that we can partner with traffic control and paving costs, et cetera, that we share with the county instead of absorbing that cost on our own.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I wanna thank um Ken Jenkins, um County Executive Jenkins, for helping us facilitate this um this partnership with the county.
Yeah, yeah, they've been helpful, we met uh a couple times, and like I say, uh they were um very understanding, because the Joan Corwin Way project is gonna be, that's an eighteen month project, and that's gonna have an effect on the traffic there. We did not want traffic affected further up Quaker at the same time, so.
Right.
Uh the county's working with us there. Okay, the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, uh the generator replacement, everybody remembers that uh a couple summers ago. So the generator's installed, we were waiting for the transfer switch, uh that has come in, um our in-house uh electrician, Dan Rubino's working on that currently. The Chappack Solar Installation actually started yesterday. Uh they came out, so the materials were received, uh solar panels are they started work about a week early, so that's uh begun. Uh the replacement of the uh auditorium fixtures within the Chappack uh with LED lights. Uh that was completed, that was uh funded solely by a generous contribution or generous grant uh allocation from Senator Pete Harkam, uh that was one of the DASNY grants that we've received, and uh we did finish that project earlier this year. Uh
And it looks great.
Yeah, very, very good.
I was there last night, yeah.
Uh Chappack, there is a uh walkway, so we completed the handicap parking area around Chappack. There was a walkway and a railing that were designed, unfortunately, the engineers um their initial design uh was not adequate for that space. It didn't meet ADA requirements, I believe, so uh we ended up designing that in-house, Miguel and uh Bob ended up designing that, and uh it's complete, we're just waiting to get that back to the contractor to be able to uh finish that. Lino kinda helped us to uh re- remove the engineer from the project.
Yeah, thank you too.
Nice way of saying it.
Thank you to Bob and Miguel, that's great.
Uh the Millwood Park, uh the ADA access to the playground, uh that was completed last summer, uh we haven't been able to close out the project. Unfortunately, the uh we haven't been able to give the contractor their final payment, because they are not complying with the documentation requirements, so they'll get paid when they do that, um I guess they're not in a hurry.
That's strange, okay.
That's literally it, it's just documentation payment.
That's it, yeah, if you got, we we were actually up there this morning again, uh trees up there, it looks good, they did a good job.
Looks great. Great, it does.
Uh next is the chap line, I gave the uh board a little update in uh executive session, um so the request for qualifications for the design of this project were due back last, uh I'm sorry, they were due back on the sixteenth. Uh so that was a week ago. Um we received four responses to that, so there is uh an internal uh committee that's meeting to uh to review the RFQ responses, and we look to uh offer one of those um contractors to the board either uh July twenty-second or August twelfth at the latest. And I will mention, we did finally secure the Metro Northeastment, uh we we had been looking for that, that had been in the works for two years. We found out last week, uh we received it, and the price was right, uh at no cost to the town, so that was fortunate.
Okay.
You undersell how big that is.
Very big. Um the vac hall that we are purchasing, uh This was one of the uh water quality improvement project grants that we received last year, uh for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh there there was a long lead time to receive this, uh Bart is expecting this in the fall of this year. Uh what's important about this vehicle is this is going to uh go a long way towards helping us to comply with the new MS four requirements. The current uh piece of equipment that we have, in addition to being just very old, it was very undersized, and we weren't we were not able to um to clean up the volume of uh catch basins that we needed, so this is gonna help us to comply with that. Uh the Millwood Sidewalk Project, that one is another multi-year project, um DOT's been involved in that, we did finally get the approval from New York State DOT for the the land acquisition, the easements that we required. Uh now where we're sitting is there are some uh utility pole replacements that Con Ed needs, and uh they've submitted for permits uh to the DOT, they're waiting for those to be approved. Uh the design, I think, is close to a hundred percent for that. Once Con Ed has those, we'll be able to go out to bid for that.
Okay, now, uh Rob, this is along Route one hundred.
Uh yeah, so
The sidewalk, okay.
Yeah.
Right. That just just to make sure, because we all also sometimes talk about the complete streets. Sidewalk connecting Millwood to and Getney to, you know, Shamco Hamlet, so.
Right.
This is the old project.
Yes, correct, that's been in the works for years.
Yeah.
Um now I've got some projects that are not town projects, but uh wanna keep the board updated on these, uh next couple are New York State DOT projects. Um We have a culvert replacement on Route one seventeen at Old House Lane. Uh and we have the uh a culvert at Sawmill River Parkway, uh between Quaker, Quaker Road uh oh, between the Quaker Quaker Road Bridge and uh Horace Greeley Statue, um so for the Route one seventeen culvert, the current plans uh are to relocate the utilities this fall, and begin the culvert replacement in the spring. Um our staff thinks that's unlikely, because they uh they haven't yet submitted the plans uh for Department of Health approval, so we think it probably going to be a little bit further on than that. Um the for the Sawmill Parkway Culvert, uh the plans call for the sewer main uh relocation of the sewer main in the summer of twenty twenty-five, and the work to begin in the summer of twenty twenty-six. Again, we don't think that's likely at this point, but that's the last update that we had from the New York State DOT on that.
Do you know how much of a disruption it's going to be when they
Significant.
do start those?
Yeah, so our staff has been a couple times with them, we've had some input, uh I know Bart had some input on the culvert on one seventeen Sawmill River, I, they're not going to do them simultaneously, because they will both have an input uh an impact on the traffic, so once we do have more information, I'll keep the board updated with that for sure.
I mean, like I'm just trying to get a sense of the magnitude, like is one seventeen gonna be closed for a period of time?
I think it is.
Okay. That's
So we don't have the final design plans for that yet, but uh it's not closed completely, it may go down to one lane, but I know there was a, they're redirecting uh the truck routes there too, so.
Right, thanks for keeping an eye on that, cause that's going to be very disruptive.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I I don't know that we wanna say that it's going to be closed completely without knowing, for sure.
Uh We don't know that yet, yeah.
Usually, they do try to keep one lane open, if it's, there's a closure, it's very minimal
Yeah.
for a few number of hours, but I, you know, we really have no idea, so I just don't wanna get ahead of this, and, you know.
Yeah, apart apart is meeting with them routinely, so when when we have an update on that, we'll share it. Uh the relief sewer project on Joan Corwin Way, uh the county has finally issued that bid. Uh they expect the return of bids on July sixteenth. Uh they anticipate naming a contractor in October, um there's some requirements within that, that I I don't believe they're actually gonna start that until spring of twenty twenty-six. Uh they'll name the contractor in October, uh and they may come out and do some of the prep work, but the actual construction I don't think will begin until spring of twenty twenty-six, that's an eighteen month project. Uh again, we'll update the board when we have specific traffic plans, that will be very disruptive uh within that area. And the project that I mentioned a a bit ago, the Westchester County project, the extension of the county trunk uh and our water main replacement project, as I said before, that will not start until the end of the other project on Joan Corwin Way. Uh Sabrina reached out last week, we were unable to get an update, uh we mentioned the uh grant that had been received for the design work for the uh grade crossing elimination over the uh Sawmill Parkway. Uh we don't have a current update from New York State, uh Sabrina reached out, did not have a response yet on that.
Yeah, that was a a federal DOT grant.
Yeah, it was about
And it went through the state DOT, DOT, um yeah, okay.
Yes. I think it was about, was it two two point seven million?
Yeah, I think you got it right, uh two point six, just for the engineering.
Yes, just for the engineering, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and finally, we have some in-house projects that are uh kind of on the horizon, I don't think these uh all of these have started yet, so. Uh Vicky, you mentioned the feasibility study for the uh sidewalk and Millwood Road between the North County Trailhead and Getney Park. Um we've kinda as as we transitioned from Bob Seolia's engineer to Jeff, um our engineering department's pretty overloaded right at the moment, so that's on our radar, but they haven't been able to work on that quite yet. Uh the feasibility study for the sidewalk along one seventeen, so I think I updated the board on that a few weeks ago, so phase one uh we've contracted with the survey and design for phase one, which is the area kinda right on the corner there, right around the mobile station. Uh they're working on that now, and that will, they expect that to take place before the end of the year. Uh phase two is further along to Salem Road, um that's gonna require, we're we're still getting a proposal for the survey. And I think uh our staff is gonna take a look at that uh in-house as well, to kind of determine the feasibility, there's a few properties that would be affected. And we're trying to determine uh how affected they will be in order to see if we wanna proceed with that project.
Yeah, I I'm sure that will complicate it a bit, but do you have any idea of a timeline, despite, you know, the
Yeah. I don't, we've gotta complete that first one, uh the corner first, because that sidewalk is, the existing sidewalk that's really deteriorated, so we need to to make sure that's completed first.
But that sounds like it it'll be relatively quick, by the end of the year, yeah.
Yes, it sounds like it, yeah.
So do we wanna wait, we're not waiting for that before
We're not waiting, no, but we're, well
starting the other phase two.
We're gonna, I think the, we're waiting for a proposal from that survey, or we're gonna use the same survey and design company.
Right. So the phase two isn't waiting to start?
It's not waiting to start, we just
Until the word is over, it, but it's just a different aspect of it, okay.
No, not Correct, yeah, yeah.
Well, did we ever find anything out about how Pleasantville got their sidewalks on one seventeen?
We didn't.
With the snow shelf and all that, you know, can we find out? I really wanna know that.
Well But that was in conjunction with a development, right, with the development of those
It was in conjunction with the development, and I think it had been approved a while ago, I I don't know specifically why, and
Exactly.
well, you know, maybe you can help me, is the state gonna tell us why they have, why they relaxed the the snow shelf requirements on that road? Probably not. So. Um so I I don't know that that would be a hindrance, at least to Salem, maybe further on down the road, that might be a hindrance. The the issue getting to Salem again is you've got some properties that are right up on the road right there.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking about from, you know, heading toward the high school, like
Oh, okay.
you know, the people want sidewalks there.
So, we had looked at that in the past, and that that was not feasible in the past. Um that was because it wasn't just a snow shelf, I think, I mean, that was a a component of it, but you were taking, that had a significant amount of property taking, um Yeah, there was an eminent domain, yeah, take property cost. That that made it really class prohibitive, yeah.
Retaining walls.
Retaining walls, yeah, said.
It was the same for Douglas Douglas Road.
Right, and and also up on one seventeen, part of the issue was it was gonna make uh quite a few of those homes uh non-compliant zoning laws, so that was an issue too. That was, we we had actually received a grant to borrow money, that's what we ended up shifting to Millwood, because we just couldn't do it, that was studied back in probably before I became comptroller, so was, but I was in the town, so probably two thousand seventy-nine, somewhere in there.
Hmm, yeah, but it's not just that either, you also have um, you know, the topography with blind curves and having to sometimes switch over um to the other side of the road to continue sidewalk, and that's very dangerous on a state road.
Yeah, on a state road, the state DOT
But except, you know, expected state uh a crossing, so
Yeah, they probably would not
There are, there were a lot of reasons for that, not just, you know, making a property zoning non-compliant, which we could, you know
We we could, but the
We could give exceptions for that, but that those weren't the main reasons.
No, but there were a variety of reasons on that, and yeah, the state would not approve a a midwalk crossing on a state road.
Yeah. Right, these were highly dangerous sites to have a sidewalk. Um but this is going to Salem Road, the one we're talking about, and that is a highly uh utilized
Right, right.
area, there's no sidewalk when people are using, are walking there quite a bit.
Yeah.
Which is dangerous, so um
I I see people walking there daily.
Yeah, so we're going to do everything we can to to build a sidewalk there, but there are a couple of properties that have to be addressed.
Okay, there's some stormwater improvements that are required, uh going up, I guess, on the corner of uh King, going up King Street and Greeley, uh don't have an update on that right now. Jill's last update was, we were expecting to work on that in-house this year, I think that may end up being a fall or or a winter project that they're looking at, but I'll have to confirm.
I'm not sure I understand what that w- uh what the issue is there, cause
So the uh the businesses there, when we have excessive rain, they kind of flood the way the the drainage um proceeding flooding, so I think we're hoping to alleviate some of the
So is it that entire stretch like between the community center and the intersection?
I think so, yeah. Uh the proposed sewer service at Amsterdam Park uh we're currently working, that's one of the projects our engineering department is working with uh on the in-house design that we received uh another DASNY grant, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh we're hoping that that will allow us to increase our recreational offerings up there. Uh putting sewer service in will allow us to install two bathrooms. Uh we've also uh as part of as a different part of the Amsterdam property, we put some uh heat pumps in there as well. So uh a lot of renovation going on up in Amsterdam. Hopefully that will make that building uh even more usable now.
Yeah, that will be for camp adventure.
Yeah.
Right, so, okay, hopefully there'll be no waiting lists.
Uh so we have the Town Hall parking lot improvements, uh we've kinda put that on hold right now until we do the assessment on the building, uh it probably wouldn't be a great idea to to repave the parking lot if we may end up expanding the building or or doing anything reconfiguring the lot, so we're holding off on that right now. Uh the same thing is uh as far as the refurbishment and expansion of the facilities uh at Town Hall. Uh we are the recycling and parks garage building repairs, that project's currently underway. There's some uh repairs to the roof and I think at the recycling garage, the foundation needs some repair there. Uh we have the Chappack boiler replacement project, um that's still on hold, we haven't done anything with that yet. Um that's on the horizon, we know the boiler needs replacing there, but we we uh yeah, we have not completed that yet. And uh finally, the renovation for ADA compliance, the Town Hall bathrooms, uh you see, the men's room is currently out of order here. Uh that is the fifth of five bathrooms that our staff in-house has replaced. Uh we've had a contractor doing the tile work, but everything else uh Chip, Walter and Dan have redone from putting in the ceiling, the walls, the the new fixtures, uh wiring in there. Town Hall staff has done all of that, so
Walter is amazing, I've got to work with him a little bit. He's really
Yeah, he's
spectacular.
He is, thank you, Walter.
Yes.
The whole staff, I mean, when you look at at Chip as the green carpenter and Dan Rovino,
Yeah. Chip is working with him too.
most municipalities do not have an electrician in-house like we do, and they've gotta contract all that work out, so that's
Very fortunate.
Father of fortune.
Yeah, he's excellent.
So Rob, essentially they're putting the the work in Town Hall on hold, except for the the bathroom, which is in disrepair now, but
Yeah.
everything you have listed here.
Yeah, I think anybody in particular, the ladies' room remembers how bad that was.
Anything else? Yeah.
Looks really nice now. It is nice.
But considering this RFP, we're we're just putting all this on hold, okay?
Yeah.
What about that boiler replacement?
So
That was like a huge
It is, and that's been ordered, so unfortunately, that is one thing that we had to replace here.
That's that's a lot of pressure.
Uh we had found out that was actually dangerous, um so we we needed to go ahead and order that right away.
Hmm.
And there wasn't just a a comfort issue, it was a safety issue there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed there wasn't no mention of like the EV chargers that are being replaced and installed, do you have an update on that?
Yep, uh we're just completing the contract with that uh for the uh for the grant, that was a NYSERDA grant, so Sabrina's working on that. That should be beginning soon, uh I know we just completed the contract work for that.
Thanks.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, Rob, so your first um quarterly project update. So who's doing the financial quarterly, is that the
You will, you're so on July eighth, uh Alan Cassay will be here to present the audit results and the financial statements, and I've asked Carl to do his first uh financial update as well, so
Our new our new Town Clerk, we're looking forward to having him at at his first meeting, I assume that will be his first?
Yeah.
He's not coming before, okay?
Yeah. No, and it's uh been hard to keep my hands off that, cause I've done that for so long, but um
Yeah, I know. Sorry, I shouldn't have brought it up.
Yeah.
But you'll be here, so you'll be not
Well, I'll let him take over, I'll be here, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so do you wanna go over the administrative items before we close this out?
Sure, uh so we have a retroactive payment of claims for checks stated on June twelfth. We have adoption of monthly reports for May. Adoption of the meeting minutes for May. We have an authorization to attend uh conference for the police department. Uh authorization to approve a noise waiver at four fifteen Sorrow Street, uh this is an event that that resident holds each year. Uh they hire a couple of police officers to help with traffic control, uh we've had no complaints over that in the past. Uh we have two resolutions for the water quality uh improvement program. Uh the first one is uh the funding for the uh decommissioning of the Upper Minkle Dam. And the second one is for uh live edge snow pile blades for apartment. Uh we have the authorization to purchase two uh police motorcycles uh with funding from a press grant, we wanna thank uh Senator Pete Harkam for that, uh he's helping out with that. Uh we have an authorization to utilize senior trust funds for a senior trip. And we have an authorization to renew our workers' comp coverage uh for one more year, so uh we're back with perma, uh the rate uh just because I'm kinda Jill and I are kinda proud of that, back when uh when RJ first joined us, we had a workers' comp renewal uh of close to a million dollars and our renewal now is in the area of three hundred thousand dollars, so um we kinda we we cleaned up the workers' comp claims over the years and we've kept them low and because of that, uh permit continues to give us a a reasonable quote.
Okay, any any questions from anyone? Okay, thank you, Rob, uh I'd like to ask for motion to adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now in our town board meeting, so any um any announcements?
So I do have a couple, I just wanna remind everybody, the uh parking year, the renewal for parking permits um began on June fifteenth, so uh we're still seeing a pretty steady volume coming into the Town Clerk's office, so just wanna remind everybody to to come in and renew your permit. You can renew it online uh on our website. The app is Pango uh for anybody returning with a permit from last year. And uh Irene or Patty or Christina will help walk you through it in the clerk's office. But it's important that everybody comes in to renew their park permit the prior year expired. Um and I do wanna uh just let everybody know, unfortunately, the uh end of the year event we have scheduled each year here, the recreation event for the students uh out on Rec Field that was scheduled for t- for tomorrow, we're gonna move that to Thursday, same hours from eleven AM to one PM. Uh we just thought with the excessive heat we've had here the last couple of days, uh it would be a good idea to move it to the next day, so we had Thursday as a rain date, it's actually gonna end up being a heat date for us and we'll hold that event on Thursday instead.
Great.
Okay, I'm sure the kids would love that.
Yeah.
That's a great um new new activity that we've started in town, right about two, three years ago?
Yeah, it's been a couple of years now, it's a nice event, they've got pizza while at last, I think they have a ice truck that comes out there, um they've got a bounce house and I think a couple other, they've got some games and events, so um I think it's usually well attended.
Yeah, so I I just wanna say thank you to Ike for thinking of it. It's a nice way to work with the schools, it's on last day of school and so the town provides it for the school kids, and I I think that's a great way to um all be part of the same community, so. Okay, let's see, um for the
Oh, Vicky.
Yes.
Um I just wanted to mention that the um compost um program is now twenty-four hours instead of just dropping off during the recycling centers hours, which I think is great for folks who have trouble
Okay.
um getting there during the open hours, so it's now a twenty-four hour drop-off.
Okay, do we have that? Did we have that in the newsletter?
We did, I believe, so um
Like I thought we did, yeah, but but it's good to let people know here.
Yeah, so we replaced, uh what we ended up doing is putting the uh receptacles outside of the gate, so the gate was, I guess, locked uh at a certain hour each night, so what we've done is placed the receptacles outside so that anybody can drop off the composting um outside of the gate.
Right.
Um I know Bart wanted to remind, make sure just uh it's just a Mike's Italian, sorry, I wanted to remind everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Make sure it's just food composting that you're putting in there and not other recyclables.
Yes, great, I think that's great, maybe more people will participate.
Okay. Right, I I think we put it pretty prominently, if anyone scrolls down and reads the whole newsletter, um then we'll have it in again.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Um for the supervisor's report, oh Rob, are you all set?
Yeah, all set with that, that's it, yeah.
Okay, all right, so for the supervisor's report, I wanna let everyone know that I attended um Assemblyman Chris Burdick's um Women of Distinction Awards for twenty twenty-five. It was held at the Chapel Court Performing Arts Center for the second year in a row, so we were very honored to hold this um really great event here in Newcastle. There were about two hundred people in attendance, it was a lot of people. Um there were um thirty-seven honorees, but he uh but people were able to invite as many guests as they wanted, um as opposed to what was going on before, they were totally no constrained, so um it was a real honor to hold it here. There were thirty-seven honorees, but we had three from the town of Newcastle. And I wanna say that one of them was our own Holly McCall who was honored for her work on the town board and on the school board and um as treasurer of up to us and I think founding member and as a member of the Rotary.
Hmm.
We also had uh Vaishali Badachara who is on the Town Committee for Inclusion and Belonging. Uh Vaishali uh worked as a PTA, worked on PTA district committees as well doing a lot of work on equity and and belonging. And she uh was instrumental along with our co-chair Tara Ramirez, who's instrumental in in bringing the story exchange program to town. And she's also the president of the Indian Cultural Association of Westchester. So we're very proud of Vaishali as well. And also Judge Lizette Fernandez is a resident of Newcastle who was recognized for her service as um she's the first Ecuadorian-American judge in the ninth judicial district with a long history of um her work in the judiciary, so uh we're very proud to have these three wonderful women recognized from the town of Newcastle. It was a great event, and I just have to say how much I appreciate having Chappack as a community theater. Uh because you know, as opposed to renting it to a private operator who could put, you know, whatever performances are that might might be very good. We could also use the theater here for our town and the surrounding towns as well, so we're very lucky to have this community theater, and I look forward to um you know, developing it and seeing um seeing the progress with Chappack in the future. Um and that's all I have for the supervisor's report, anything else from the board that anyone wants to report? No, okay, um let's see. Rob, we are up to town administrators report, I don't know how different that is from the announcements, but if you have anything for that?
No, it's it's not much different, and I just uh touched, I wanted to mention that Chether Road we expect, but I've covered that in the uh in the current projects update, but Chether Road is uh due to be opened uh this weekend, and that was about all I had.
Okay. Uh now we've reached the public comment period. Uh if anyone wants to make a public comment, please come up to the microphone and identify yourself. I don't think there's anyone in uh here in person to make a comment, and seeing that there are none. Um is there anyone online for public comment?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so we will close the public comment period. And we will open a public hearing regarding a local law on on a local law regarding no camping on public places, um you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh Lino, would you like to start us off with the legislation?
Sure, this is a proposed legislation, local law that prohibits uh camping on public places, including public streets, sidewalks, alleyways, passageways and other rights away of publicly owned uh property. Um and the law prohibits uh lodging or camping on a public street, including any parked vehicle on a public street. And there are fines anywhere from two fifty to five hundred for violating this provision. Uh it does allow for permitted camping, obviously with proper permits with from the from the town. But for the most part, this local law mirrors other similar local laws that other towns have adopted uh for camping in public spaces, so we've basically taken that tailored towards Newcastle and that's what we have on tonight. The only thing I will say, uh when we had done this on section F enforcement when I spoke to the chief he wanted me to remove it, and in my version it it has been removed, but in the version you have before you, it's still there, but the local law that you're proposing to adopt has that removed, so under enforcement says the local law shall be enforced by any other officer of the town of Newcastle Police Department and the town building department and New York State trooper, so we removed New York State trooper because the chief said all you really need is the town of Newcastle and the building department, so we removed the state police reference, that's all, that's the only modification.
Okay, okay. Okay, so
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so the public hearing is open, is is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on um on this proposed local law?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no one is making a comment in person, is there anyone online?
No hands are raised.
Okay. All right, well, seeing that there are no public comments at all um I would propose that we close the public hearing and leave the record open for any written comments?
See, I would I would suggest maybe leaving it open till Friday noon for written comments?
Friday noon, yeah, that's what we usually do. Okay, so may I have a motion, um
To close the oral, you know, the public comment portion of the meeting and leave it open for written comment uh till Friday uh till noon.
Okay.
Second.
So what?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, now what about consent agenda, Rob, do you wanna run through it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, for consent agenda, we have the adoption of monthly reports from May of two thousand twenty-five, adoption of minutes May of two thousand twenty-five, authorization to attend conference uh from the police chief. Authorization to approve the noise waiver at four fifteen Sorrow Street. Uh the resolution in support of the town of Newcastle's request for funding through the New York State Water Quality Improvement Program, through the decommissioning of the Upper Minkle Dam. We have the resolution in support of the town of Newcastle's request for funding through the New York State Water Quality Improvement Program for the live edge snow pile blades. The authorization to purchase two police motorcycles utilizing funding from the press grant. Uh authorization to utilize senior trust funds for a senior trip. And the authorization to renew workers' compensation coverage for perma.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Okay, let's start with the resolutions, Holly, do you wanna start us off?
Yes, okay. I move to adopt the items one through nine as listed on the consent agenda, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of six hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and six cents listed on the summary AP check register and detailed voucher detail report. Both dated June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Thursday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Go ahead, why don't you each take take one?
Right.
I will do it.
I move to authorize the hiring of Kevin McCarville for the position of recreation attendant within the Recreation and Parks Department at the rate of eighteen or twenty dollars per hour varying per event effective June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Oliver Jacobs at a rate of twenty dollars per hour Rich Chrysler at the rate of twenty-four dollars per hour, position permit of seasonal laborers within the Recreation and Parks Department, sorry, permit, effective July fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals for the position of recreation attendant within the Recreation and Parks Department to serve as camp counselors at the corresponding rates as indicated below.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you have a motion to adjourn.
I think we have one one other one we missed.
Um one more, if you guys wanna issue the RFP for the Newcastle Town Hall needs
Oh, yeah?
Were you okay with the draft of the contract?
Yes, I I was okay with it, yeah.
Okay, yep, then we can Okay, yep, then we can issue it.
So can we get a motion to authorize the issuance of a request for proposals for Newcastle Town Hall space needs and feasibility assessment?
May I have such motion?
So So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Oh Okay, jury, move to adjourn, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we adjourn.